YouTube stream to start. Okay, welcome everyone. Could you all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, we've done a little bit of seat shifting. Welcome everyone to our December Board Meeting. We did our annual organization meeting before we went into closed session. I was elected President, Laura Bratt was elected Vice President, and Shelley Clark, who is not able to join us tonight, was elected Clerk. Since I've already done those announcements, why don't we still go ahead and start with the normal attendance, starting with our Student Board Representative, Anya.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anya, currently the Student Board Member for SRVUSD.
My name's Jesse Van Zee. I'm the new trustee.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. I'm Susanna Ordway, trustee for Area 4.
Hello, I'm Laura Bratt. I'm trustee for Area 3.
And Rachel Hurd, trustee Area 5. Um, we did just meet in closed session and we have some items to report out. First, may I ask the Board for a motion to approve the stipulated expulsion agreement for student 012223.
I moved the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, um, and we'll do it as the call-out vote, right?
Yes.
And Anya, I don't believe you get to vote on this one.
Correct. The motion was made by Board Member Ordway and seconded by Board Member Bratt. Roll call vote, Board Member Van Zee, Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Bratt.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. And then in other action tonight, uh, in closed session, the Board of Education voted to approve a separation agreement with a certificated employee of the district, and it was a unanimous vote of four board members. Okay, um, that takes us to the agenda. May we have a motion to accept the minutes from November 15?
So moved.
Second. The motion was made by Board Member Bratt and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call vote, Student Board Member Ayapan.
Aye.
Um, Board Member Van Zee, since you weren't here, I assume that you will be abstaining. Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Bratt.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes 3-0.
Okay, uh, now we're on Agenda Approval and Consent Action. We have a motion to accept the open session agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Board Member Bratt and seconded by Board Member Van Zee. Roll call vote, Student Board Member Ayapan.
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Bratt.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
Okay, that brings us to consent. The consent agenda are items that are considered routine in nature and are usually voted for in one board action. If a board member would like a consent item pulled for separate discussion, please let us know. And if, uh, members of the public would like that, um, they can let us know as well.
I would like a consent item pulled for public discussion.
Which number, Jesse?
Section 13.4, please.
13.4. Okay, that's ratification of purchase orders. So 13.4 will become 11.6. And are there any others? This is the 10.2 and then 12.1. Okay, so. That was a community request that was put on the agenda, and, um, the, the member of the public is not available to come in person, so we're actually going to cover that in, in January. Probably should have mentioned that when I did the agenda approval. And, um, yeah, that's, that's the case. Okay, so we have one amendment to the consent agenda, but may I have a, a motion to approve the amended consent?
I have a motion to approve the amended consent.
Second.
Okay.
The motion was made by Board Member Van Zee and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call, Student Board Member Ayapan.
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Bratt.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
Okay, reports to the Board. Let's hear first from our Student Board. Student recognition. Oh, saw student, went right to it. Sorry. That's why Anya looked at like me like, what? Okay, student recognition. I'm sorry. Oh, and it's written very small. Nope, that's not the back of the paper. That's all I got, so. Thank you. Okay, um, tonight we're honoring five students. Four students from Quail Run who hosted a lemonade tea stand and donated the money, approximately $40, back to Quail Run to support the school library. Um, Olivia and Ali Castillo. I'm sorry, say it again? Eily, I'm so sorry I didn't pronounce it correctly. So would Olivia and Ali Castillo please stand? Eily? Eily, I'm sorry, I thought that's what I said. Um, and then there's two other students, Maely and Amy Stombach, and they're not able to attend tonight. But could the two students who are here stand, please? Come up? All four students are deeply connected to their school community and understand the importance of service. Many of our students do great things, and this is just one example of how our students across all of our schools can learn at such a young age how important it is to serve your community. These young people exemplify our strategic directions and goals for learning and success in San Ramon Valley Unified School District. Would the other board members like to join us for a picture? And then we're also recognizing, uh, Doertie Valley High School student Ella Lynn. Ella was the first USA player ever to advance to the quarterfinals of badminton world junior championships. She reached the top eight in individual events after winning against players from China, Portugal, Switzerland, and Thailand. She exemplifies our strategic directions. Like so many of our students, Ella has sought out the types of activities that help her thrive and succeed. She has found a passion and is accomplishing and surpassing her goals. Is Ella here? Can you come up too? Okay, item 10.2 is public comment for non-agenda items, and I have two cards. Uh, no, I have one card, um, from Mr. Mike Arada. Can you please come up? Oh, and I, I need to read the, the normal rules about each person having three minutes. Adhere to the clock. Only items within our jurisdiction can be heard.
All set then, Rachel, all the flies from Air Force?
Yep.
Uh, thank you. Uh, one subset of the district's pernicious equity program is what staff members themselves have called "quering the classroom", quote unquote, complete with pronoun confusion, LGBTQ club meetings hidden from parental attention, and homosexual and transgender themed read aloud picture books for even pre-kindergartners. A second Equity Program Division is an overtly racist form of alleged anti-racism, prejudicially dividing students into white supremacist oppressors on one hand, and people of color victims on the other. That twisted outlook led to Mr. Malloy's double standard defamation of the Cal-Hi stunt team last May. Then, at the district's Equity Summer Institute in July, one presentation maligned whites in general, regardless of economic status, as infected by white privilege with an alleged need to understand how they, quote, "benefit from, support, and uphold white supremacy." So now comes the third wave of SRVUSD's equity maneuvering, grading for equity. That was the subject of another summer institute presentation in which grades themselves were described as inequitable. No, and do then. As illustrated now at the, on the, at my right, and it's srveexpositor.com, the district's answer is an apparent dumbing down of performance expectations and related grading standards. The examples I've obtained, one online and another sent me by a concerned parent, happen to be those exhibited at two middle schools with the largest drops in C double A S double P math testing this past school year, i.e. Charlotte Wood and Stone Valley, respectively, with 14-point and 12-point math drops against the district's average five-point drop. The sign shows the letter grade breakdown reportedly posted at Charlotte Wood's Back to School Night. Those who recall grade equivalents may remember As corresponding to 90 or maybe 93%, up to 100%. Cs, once upon a time 70 to 79% or so, now require merely a 37 to 59% performance. The M, P, E, and N letter designations were initiated at Stone Valley by an activist teacher there. The M stands for mastery, the P for proficient, the E for emerging, the N for no evidence of learning. Presently, combinations of those assessments lead to the A through D grade assignments, as shown correspondingly on the, uh, sign at my right. The Stone Valley teacher herself no longer even assigns Ds, but there's apparently been no board adoption of the grading scale. Meanwhile, one grading and equity summer institute slide explained that you gotta break some eggs to make omelets, and fair isn't equal. The developing equity outcome appears reminiscent of Alice in Wonderland's Dodo. Everybody has won and all must have prizes. Perhaps Lewis Carroll, himself a mathematician, foresaw today's dummy down of standards.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Kessel, CEO, President of CSCA. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Jesse to the Board, and we're looking forward to working with you. Um, I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all classified employees that work hard for, for and with all of our students every day. Without you in this district, um, the district would not run. Um, and I'm just wishing everyone a happy holiday and a great winter break.
Thank you, Tammy. And next we have Laura Finco, President of Serbia.
Good evening. I'd like to take a moment to have you please share with me the fact that this land that we are standing on gathered here tonight has been the Aloney Land for thousands of years. This land has also been the home of the Takon tribe. The Aloney Nation has remained committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries. It's been cherished and protected as elders have instructed the young through generations. We are honored and grateful to be here this evening on their traditional lands. My name is Laura Finco. I am the President of the San Ramon Valley Education Association, representing the over 1,700 non-managerial certificated personnel in this district. I do want to take this time this evening to congratulate President Hurd and Trustee Ordway on your return to the Board, and welcome Mr. Van Zee to the Board. As some of you know, my mother passed away this last week. While not unexpected, it was still untimely because we believed that we had more time. Her passing has given me time to be reflective, especially about family and about what matters most in my life. My mother was the one who taught me that while you may not always agree with somebody, you still need to be respectful. She also shared that kindness is one of the hardest traits for some people to embrace because being kind too often symbolizes weakness, and yet the opposite is true. To be kind, especially in the midst of disagreement or discourse, takes courage and a strength of character. I spoke last month about trusting our educators to be the educational professionals that they are, allowing us the academic freedom to create relevant curriculum and making sure that our professional experience is respected. Our students need to know that their teachers are respected as professionals, as the professionals that they are. Our teaching force is one of the most highly educated in the state. We have scientists, artists, classically trained musicians, published writers, researchers, PhDs and other advanced degrees, all who have elected to be part of the teaching, um, force, helping our students navigate their educational journey. Our teachers seek out new ideas for grading and assessment, new ideas for grading and assessment. They pioneer new techniques in reading and writing and embrace the challenge of social emotional wellness in a world that seems to be forgetting simple things like kindness. Additionally, I want to show that there are a few things that we have been grappling with this past year, even though it's only been a few months long. And I'm hoping that the partnerships that we've established and built will be able to find some resolution. One, right now, we're experiencing an overwhelming amount of independent study contracts. On many campuses, we are seeing over 10% of the student population requesting independent study contracts for the winter holidays. Developing less of these contracts, putting together the work, and then following up takes a lot of time. Board policy changed because of the pandemic, but we need to look at it, we need to take an internal audit of how this is impacting our classrooms. Secondly, because of shortage of personnel, we don't always have the supports for special education, be it whether it's a general education push-in or a sped classroom. This is affecting our educators and it's affecting our students. It's affecting our educators' ability to provide instruction, and in some cases, it's a safety concern. We're asking that a strategic plan be developed on how to address this personnel issue and provide relief and respite for our sped teachers and our students. We also want to congratulate some students, not just the ones that we acknowledged here this evening, but recently, four of our high schools, our four high schools held an ethnic studies forum. I want to applaud the students' involvement in that ethnic studies forum because those brave voices are bringing to light the need to truly review how our school systems operate and how we look at diversity and equity. And I also want to congratulate the San Ramon Valley High School Wolves football team on their colossal year and the performance at the state champion. It took Granite Bay overtime to beat those boys. Finally, as we move through what is traditionally a holiday season, I do have a, a winter wish in honor of my mother. Kindness is giving hope to those who think they're alone in the world. Kindness is seeing, is seeing the best in others when they cannot see it themselves. Kindness is something anyone can give without losing anything themselves. Kindness is not what you are, but who you are. Be kind. Thank you.
Thank you both, Laura and Tammy. Um, now we're at our Student Board Member Report.
Um, so I had the chance to attend the first LCAP meeting of the year. It was on, um, deep innovation and learning. It was wonderful to see that the, the progress the school is, uh, the districts are making. Um, and yeah, one thing I'm hoping is that more students do get involved with the LCAP Committee. Um, Mr. Campopiano and I are working on that and looking forward to see the progress we make in that aspect as well. Um, the Student Senate, uh, met yesterday. I unfortunately was not able to attend the meeting. Um, but just a couple of things on the agenda. The Student Voice Subcommittee is still continuing to work to get a student on the County Board of Education. So that is something that they're still actively working towards. I know that they were signed last year, but there is still progress needed to be made on that front. Um, as well as the Mental Health Subcommittee has taken initiative and created a meetup for middle schoolers and high schoolers. So they're currently looking for students to participate. It's kind of like peer-to-peer, um, conversation and just creating that intra-district mental health meetup. And then finally on the agenda, there was also a presentation on backpack weight, which has been a concern among schools, um, especially with high schools, uh, and the different periods. I know at Doertie Valley, especially on days that aren't block, carrying a bunch of homework and different textbooks can put a lot of strain, and that physical aspect is something that needs to be looked at. So that's something the Student Senate is also working towards. Um, but other than that, uh, happy holidays, guys.
Um, Anya, about the, the, um, initiative to, to have a student board member on the county school board, is there anything that we can do either individually as trustees or as a board to help, um, support that?
I definitely, I'll get back to you on that. I have to connect with the Student Senate regarding that. I think there was a law signed by the California State Board of Education saying if a certain, I think 500, um, people sign a petition to get a student on the county board, they'd have to follow that. Um, and the Student Senate last year emailed them regarding that, and they had the petition sent out, but there was no follow-up. So I think it's just kind of figuring out that process, but thank you so much for the interest. I'll definitely get back to you.
Thank you.
Remember to turn this on. Anyone else? Okay, uh, now we're at Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Hurd, and I'm going to be brief tonight because as you can hear, I have limited voice tonight. And I need my voice on Thursday for when we have a board workshop, and we're going to be walking through all of the thought exchange insights and perspectives that happen this fall. But what I want to draw our attention to is something that, um, we just announced recently. Uh, the Board and our community, I think, knows that we have been involved in what's called Learning 2025. It's a national, um, involvement connected to the School Superintendents Association. And the reason why we got so involved in Learning 2025 is because at the same time that we were working on our strategic directions, a national body was working on a white paper, speaking about where education is and where education needs to go in order to serve our students and public education most effectively. And the irony is that we didn't have the benefit of that white paper when we were working with our community to develop our strategic directions. But when our strategic directions were approved by you in June, that paper came out the same month. You would have thought that the commissioners, the national commissioners, were in this room because we so aligned with the commitments we had made to ensure that our kids had all of the foundational skills. And they were deeper in terms of their thinking and their creating and their ability to communicate big ideas and complex thoughts. Our commitment to ensure that we're creating the condition that our kids can learn like that, so that they feel good about who they are, and they're confident in who they are, and that we support them in terms of their well-being, that we provide access so that each student has what they need, when they need it, how they need it, which is actually what our definition is of equity in our strategic directions. All of what we've committed to was outlined there. So we've been very involved for the last two years. And last week, it was announced nationally, and we announced it locally, that we've been named one of the lighthouse districts in the country. There were only 12 districts, I think, named last year, eight this year. And what it means is, is that we are taking strides aligned with the deep thinking in this particular commission report that speaks to not just what kids need today, but what we're going to need tomorrow. Let me give you one example of what being involved in Learning 2025 has taught me. Now, if all of you who are real tech experts in the room, you would probably have known this a long time ago, but I didn't. We've all gotten pretty used to Siri. Maybe we like our Alexa. And what I learned is that comes from something called GPT-1. Today, GPT-4 was actually launched, and not only does 2 and 3 do things like being able to fill in sentences, that's 2, GPT-3 can actually know your language well enough to write an essay for you, and you can actually find that on the web. GPT-4 can actually code. We're teaching coding. Of course we should, because that's the next frontier. But what we learned today is that the world's already changing so fast that that which we think is cutting edge may actually not be. Now, all of this need not take away from the fact that education is relational. We learn in community. The foundational pieces, as I mentioned, are necessary. You don't do any thinking without being able to read. You don't do any creating without being able to write. And, it's an and, not an or. We've got to keep learning and understanding what's around the next curve so that our five-year-olds are ready, 20 years from now, with a world that they weren't talking GPT, and forgive me, I'm still learning 4, when I went to a meeting on GPT-1 just a little while ago. And that, to me, speaks to why our educators are so necessary and so important, and we are so grateful because our profession doesn't stand still. It moves. And if we stand still, we could become obsolete. Especially when we see where so many things have happened. My last comment. I don't get so carried away about what technology can do without understanding what we have to teach our kids in order to be healthy in this digital and physical space we now live in. And that's another reason why the social emotional well-being part is so very important because as a former counselor who grew up when we didn't have all this stuff, relationships and dealing with issues were challenging, but not like they are now. And so our job is not only to focus on the learning, create the conditions for that learning, but keep an eye is here and now, and frankly, what's coming around the corner that we don't even understand, so that we can support our kids effectively. So I'm very grateful that at the national level, they see us as a lighthouse district, but doesn't mean we've got it all at all. It means that we're willing to learn, network, engage, and share. So people will come and visit us now from other places to learn what we're doing and how we're doing it, and we're going to learn from them, which is another dynamic which will allow us to continue to improve. So I'm really excited about this latest honor that has been given to the San Ramon Valley Unified School District.
Thank you. That's exciting news. Um, now we're on our action items and public hearings related to those. Um, 11.1 is consideration of acceptance of the 2223 First Interim Financial Report, and I invite Stella Kemp to come up and give this presentation.
I just make sure I know which way the remote works. Good evening, trustees, uh, and cabinet, and Dr. Malloy. Um, I'm Stella Kemp, uh, the Assistant Superintendent of, uh, Business Operations, and with me is Evan Miller, our Executive Director of Fiscal Services, uh, Business Services. So I want to start this evening first by thanking our Business Services Team for the tremendous work that they have engaged in to help prepare this evening's, uh, uh, presentation, including, uh, making sure that we had all our financial data in order to, uh, present the first interim. So, uh, tonight, we're going to, um, give you a, a glimpse of the, uh, first interim, where we are with our budget. It is a snapshot, uh, in time of the local, uh, LEA, our district's revenue, and our expenditure forecast for the current fiscal year, as well as the projection of two subsequent fiscal years. as well as the projection of two subsequent fiscal years. It is a time to adjust the budget that's based on our enacted budget, which the uh board adopted in June of twenty-twenty-two. And uh, and we have some new trailer bills that uh impacted our budget. So you're going to see this tonight in the presentation, the closing of the prior fiscal year and other factors that impact our uh revenue and our expenditures. The first interim budget covers the period of July first through October thirty-first for the fiscal year. And uh, following this, we will be submitting to the county office uh for them to review it. Tonight, we're also going to provide a snapshot of one-time funding that the district has received. We plan to um provide greater detail in January regarding these one-time funds. The board has seen some of the budget uh or some of the planned proposals uh in the last school year, and we have some more to bring to you. And then we will also review our multi-year projection. And lastly, the board will be asked to certify the first interim um report. So uh, this is really dry information, but this is the cadence that we have for our for uh public budgets here in California. So you adopt a budget in uh at the end of the year. So end of the year for us is June. And uh, and then we have to turn it into the county. Uh, then usually in August, we do a forty-five day revise. And then in October, uh, we close the first interim and present that information to the board. Uh, by the fifteenth of October, we have to submit it to the county. And then we do a second one in January uh that we submit by March to the county office. And in if we are qualified, um, and we would have to do a third interim. We're not there. Uh, but I have worked in a district where we had to do a third interim report and that was um a lot of work to do that. So um, and then we have our, of course, our budget, uh, un-audited, the estimated actuals, and then our uh audit or un-audited actuals come to you guys uh in the fall. So that's the cadence. And so we're going to move on to the first interim. So I just wanted to share with you that the first interim reflects the the financial and budgetary status as of October thirty-first. It is a true-up of a budget. And you know, a budget is an estimate, right? You estimate what your costs are going to be, what your expenditures are going to be. And the board approved this in June. And the planned expenditures now, we're in a few months into the school year, so now you're going to see where we are, what's our status on what we estimated. Now, this first interim is unusual because this year we got a blessing from the state. They had some money that they that they gave out to school districts. And so this first interim, you're going to see, when if you look at the tax forms, you're going to see a lot of change in there. And that's because we got state money. Um, we also had to uh make adjustments to our ending from last year, carryover from the um from last year's one-time dollars. And uh, that it that was also in the restricted and unrestricted areas. Uh, there's some some adjustments for health uh for our insurance rates, for health and welfare, for prop uh property and liability and workman's comp. So we have some adj- little bit of adjustment there, special ed adjustments, TK had an add-on, there's transportation funding, lots of good things. The um other thing I wanted to also share is that when we get one-time dollars to the district, that does impact a little bit on our uh reserve requirement. So when you get money, you have to increase your reserve. So um, then in the presentation, Evan's going to go over the NYPD and we are going to ask you once again to uh help us uh certify so that we can submit to the county office. On to Evan now.
Uh, thank you, Stella. Good evening, everyone. Um, so I'm just going to kind of run through the numbers both for uh the current year and our NYPD. Um, so this slide shows the delta um for our uh comparison between what we adopted in June and where we are right now. Um, we included enrollment and ADA as, you know, the biggest drivers of our revenue and expenditures. Um, but we'll see the big delta in revenue. Um, we'll break that down in the next slide. Um, and then expenditures, uh, and then the expenditures there are broken out into uh four categories. Uh, certificating classified salaries, benefits, and then our non-personnel expenditures. We'll also um do a little bit on the uh on an upcoming slide about uh the delta and those expenditures as well. So we'll dive into those. Um, and then the last line there, revenue per students, we can just see um the the impact of those increased dollars this year. Um, so on the revenue side, a lot of these we saw at the forty-five day revise. The, I think, the first four or five of those, so LCFF um increase uh due to a higher COLA, the increase to the base, as well as a TK add-on. Um, the art, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant, big one-time um from the state, as well as a learning recovery emergency grant, uh, and then homeschool and expanded learning also saw increases. At the last two, we did not see it the forty-five day. So those are, um, the first one is COVID relief deferred revenues. So those are dollars that we had budgeted to spend last year. We didn't spend them, so they're carried forward to this year. Um, and then site restricted carryover, our external donations. So sites uh received money that they didn't spend last year and are now planning to spend this year. So that's the sixty-seven million dollars that we see in increased revenues compared to the adopted budget. Uh, on the expenditure side, um, so broken out uh kind of in different categories than you saw on that slide, uh, a couple of slides ago. Um, but we're seeing the big, the biggest chunk here, of course, is in our settlements. Uh, so twenty-six million dollars as of our salary negotiations. Um, three million dollar increase uh for our COVID funds. Increase to specialty of about two and a half million dollars. Uh, other restricted carryovers, so other restricted funds that we carried over from last year. Uh, five million, the bulk of those are um lottery funds, restricted lottery funds that we had planned to spend on a textbook adoption. Those books didn't arrive until after um June thirty, so they're being spent uh this year. Um, and then that site carryover increase in restricted expenditures, so expanded learning opportunity program and the educator effectiveness grant have increased expenditures as compared to adopted budget and an increase in capital outlay. So that's forty-four million dollars. Um, so this is our our initial dive into um one-time funds. As Stella mentioned, in January, we'll come back with a deeper dive. Uh, this is really just a picture of the revenue that we're seeing. Um, so those first three, GEAR two, S R two, S R three, those are federal COVID relief funds. Again, we planned to spend them or had budgeted to spend them last year. Uh, and those are the revenues that are carried forward into the current year. Um, educator effectiveness and expanded learning opportunity uh two grants that were in adopted budget but have some deltas. Current year, um, expanded learn, I'm sorry, that was educator effectiveness. Expanded learning and in-person instruction are both state COVID relief dollars. So those are um coming forward as well. So all deltas there. And then the last two are those two big ones that were part of the enacted state budget um that uh we will come forward with some additional plans for. Um, the, other than the last two, I think all of those funds have been discussed publicly at the board meetings than we have on our website, uh, expenditure plans for for many of them. But again, we'll, we'll come back with, I think, a deeper dive onto how we plan to spend some of those dollars. Uh, on the NYPD, this first slide, uh ADA and enrollment, again, drive our revenue, our unrestricted revenue especially. Um, and the story here is really uh over the course of the last twelve years, uh, we see that our enrollment is is dropping and we expect that to increase or to continue. Sorry, not not increase. Um, laid out here, uh, in numbers, enrollment and ADA leave there. And then some of the other drivers. So UPP is our unduplicated pupil count, a percentage. Um, our LCFF COLA, which comes from the SSC DART board. Um, STIRS and PERS rates, and then our step-in column increases for certificate staff. So those are the assumptions that we use uh to drive um the budget projection. So here is a multi-year projection uh for revenues and expenditures. So we see uh the bottom line is where I'd I'd like to focus on here. Um, a fifty million dollar increase in the current year. Most of that is driven on the restricted side. And then a five million dollar decrease, again, driven by the restricted side. So we're getting those dollars in this year. We're not planning to spend them all in in the current year. Um, and then uh twenty-four, twenty-five, we're starting to see that flatten out. I think the the big takeaway we want to take from this slide is that we are not in a structural deficit. We we do see that we are receiving lots of money this year, spending it over the course of multiple years, but we don't believe that we are in a structural deficit, which has been something that has been uh talked about uh a lot here. So I wanted to make sure uh we pointed that out. Um, and then the fund balance. So what what is what is the result of all those activities on our ending fund balance? So we'll see our beginning and ending fund balance projected at the uh for each year. Um, and then at the very bottom here, we are required uh to reserve, have a three percent reserve for economic uncertainty by the state. Um, and so we have that held in Fund seventeen. Uh, in addition to that, we have a size of the fund balance, of our unrestricted fund balance in Fund One and Fund Seventeen. And so when we combine both that REU and some of the and those assignments, uh, we have a a higher reserve, but not over the ten percent. So there is a ten percent cap on those, the combination of your REU and assignments. And we don't project to exceed that cap for the course of those three years. Um, so these are just some of the things uh that we wanted to talk about, about our revenue expenditures. Um, again, revenues, we've seen a very large increase over the last two years, mostly restricted, almost all of it one time, other than our LCFF increase that we saw this year. Um, and so we're seeing that reflected in that NYPD. We will be funded at ADA rate for a three-year average. So this is something that was in the enacted state budget. It used to be just you were funded either on your current year or the prior year, whichever is higher. This three-year average of the three prior years really mitigates our decline in enrollment for us, especially because we're still including twenty-twenty-one, which was inflated. So as we move forward, you know, we will still continue to see decline in enrollment, but we're not going to feel the impact as much as we would have under previous law. Um, enrollment projections, again, we have that out there because we we do believe that um enrollment can will continue to decline. I believe we have a report from Davis coming in the next couple of months. Uh, so a demographic report. Next board meeting. So uh, we will, we will have an updated projection from our demographers. Um, a reminder here that our economic outlook is uncertain, like we're getting different data every single day. Today, inflation seems lower than, or it seems like it it may be um coming down, right? So uh, it's just very uncertain. We're not sure what to do. We want to build a conservative budget so that we can um continue to maintain our our reserves. Um, and then Prop twenty-eight, we wanted to note that was approved by the border, uh, by the voters in California uh in November. It is not included in our revenue side. So um, as we get more information from the state and those uh projections from the state for allocations, we will be including that in our upcoming budget reports. Um, on the expenditure side, of course, continued upward pressure from health and welfare pension, as well as inflation. Um, certificated staffing adjusts to ADA as we go along. So it as we see enrollment fall, we will see as our certified staffing fall. Um, and then we also wanted to point out for you, uh, as a result of negotiations with um Serbia, we had a longevity increase where teachers who came to our district but were capped at the number of years that they could bring into the district from an outside district. We, as a result of negotiations, agreed that next year, we would give them credit for those years. Uh, we have just finished a survey with um Serbia on the number of of uh employees we think that will affect. We're still crunching those numbers, but we will be able to, I think, have a projection by second interim for the impact that we'll see next year. So those, that increase is not reflected in uh the NYPD. And I'm going to pass it back to Stella.
Thanks, Evan. So with that, we have good news and uh we are recommending that the board accept and certify a positive certification for twenty-two, twenty-three first interim report. Um, and so we'll, we'll hear that in just a moment. But I wanted to um spend just a minute kind of talking to you about the next steps because, you know, we're going tonight, we're going over, here's the current year budget, but what are we doing to get ready for next year? And and so the process here, again, is a, it's a process. And so it starts in January where we have uh the budget proposal from the governor, Evan and I, a few other folks in the district, will be headed to Sacramento to hear all the great things that are on the horizon. And it it what's interesting is that I was at the CBO Symposium um a few weeks ago and we heard from the Legislative Analyst Office and we also heard from uh from Capitol Advisors, and they were in contrast with each other. Legislative Advisor's Office or Legislative Analyst Office, LAO, um, is predicting doomsday. And Capitol Advisor's like, I don't know, it may not be so bad. So with that, though, I think the state, the state's budget, you know, certainly uh outlook isn't good because um the IPOs, which generally have contributed a lot of money, uh taxable income to the state. Um, there's been, there haven't been any IPOs this year. So um, you know, that is is some, it's reduce the income, the taxable income. Uh, but uh, school districts are are protected by Prop ninety-eight. And there's a rainy day fund. And so we believe uh what we're hearing so far is that we're going to be in good shape. Now, it could be that some of the one-time dollars, those might be adjusted. Um, we don't know yet. And um and so we'll find out more in January. So in January, we really start to launch our uh our budget development. And uh, in between January and March, you're going to, you're going to get a second interim report, and we're going to be closer on the numbers for the NYPD. And uh, and then by May, we're going to be rolling into getting the budget prepared, uh, identifying the number of staff that we're going to hire, what we're going to do with different positions, what programs we're going to fund. And then we'll get the revised budget. And you never know, there might be some more one-time money or not. And then we have to make adjustments and then bring the budget back to the board at the end of June so that it's ready for July first. So that is pretty much everything for the first interim. Highlight for what to look forward to and where we are right now. And we are open for any questions.
Do board members have any questions about the first interim?
Yeah, um, I do. And uh, and really appreciate your comment about the the two entities, right? The LAO and the Capitol Advisors. Um, I think a few of us went to uh the School Board Association uh conference and um I had, and we attended some of the financial uh sessions and that's exactly what we heard, or at least I heard. I won't speak for my um colleagues, but that's what I heard, that uh usually LAO is gloom and doom, a little more pessimistic and the other group not. Um, but I just, actually, my um, a question is, I know that uh we've gotten a lot of funds from the state, which is great, and so glad that we no longer have a structural deficit. But I know that some of that, especially our one-time money, um, we have to spend, right, uh, by a certain time and stuff. So um, I think you had mentioned, Evan, that maybe uh will you be uh going into a little bit more um information or details about how we plan to spend those, like, like that yellow, like that extended learning, right? Uh, opportunity block grant. And then, and then I don't remember actually much about the in-person instruction grant.
Yeah, so we will come back with more information. Um, I, on the timelines, I can give you a brief up to those. Uh, S R, S R two in GEAR two will expire at the end of September twenty-three. S R three, the in-person instruction and an expanded learning opportunity expire expire at the end of September twenty-four. Educator Effectiveness and the Arts Music Instructional Material Discretionary Block Grant, twenty-five, twenty-six, so at the end of twenty-six, those will expire. And then the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant will expire at the end of twenty-twenty-eight. So we'll bring um plans, especially for those last two, because those haven't been discussed up with the board at all um at the next meeting. As far as expanded learning and in-person, those are COVID relief dollars that are from the state. Uh, so for like the in-person instruction grant, um, we will use some summer school. Um, we will use them for our elementary counselors. It has to be for things that are happening in person. We had held a chunk of those funds um for what, for a classroom expansion. In case when kids came back, we had to have everybody six feet apart, we would have had to use you know, way more space and way more people to teach all those kids. So we had reserved a chunk of those dollars to do that. We never had to end up doing that. So we are, we are finding ways to spend those dollars, but they they have to be for in-person instruction, which is a big restriction on those. Expanded learning, um, the the bulk of those are going for our MTSS liaisons.
Right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First, I want to say thank you, the the report in the packet.
First, I want to say thank you, the, the report in the packet was clear, concise, and I think, I know I appreciated it, and I think the community too appreciated it. It was really well done, explained a lot, but was simple to understand, so thank you. Couple of, couple of quick questions. So I noticed in the report that there was a mention of, you know, that 30,000 student threshold and how that shifts the, the amount that we need to have in reserve. What, is there anything else that that, that when, now that we're consistently below that 30,000, that, anything else from a financial standpoint that shifts because of that?
No, but I want to just say I'm glad we're not LA-unified, because, you know, LA-unified enrollment dropped significantly, and because they were so large, they only had to have a 1% reserve. And that 1% reserve was $8 billion, and now that their enrollment has dropped, they have to have a 2% reserve.
Thanks.
So they have to find $8 billion to add to their reserve.
And Laura, when we got into the 30,000 plus, our board decided to keep three, even though we could drop to two, just because we didn't want to go there when it went the other way.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. And then, so with the title, I, I've asked this before, and I'm going to keep asking it, with the Title I funding and the designation, and now that we don't have the Reduced Lunch Program, which is wonderful, and, and I saw that there was that consistent 9.5% of unduplicated students. Are we, are we finding as now we're in, what, a year, a year or so, with this inability to be able to do, look at our data through the Reduced Lunch Program, are we finding that there's a dip, or are we able to gather that information in a consistent way that really represents the student population?
So I, I have the answer, but I don't have it in front of me. I have had several talks with Zeta about this, you know, there's, there are ways to certify your free Reduced Lunch population and through the census. And so I'm, I'm not sure exactly how it's done, but we can bring information back. She's planning to, our child nutrition director's planning to give a presentation in the spring, and I'll ask her to include that in her presentation.
Okay, yeah, and, and I would be curious if the, if the state, because, you know, universal lunches, or the universal food program is now statewide, if the state is setting up a different framework about how to, how to get that data, so.
Right, and, and it's still, you know, the state reimburses up to what the, what the federal government, you know, beyond what the federal government provides, so we still need to gather that data.
Yeah, yeah, fine. And then with inflation, which it sounds like maybe it's not so bad, but it still is pretty bad, and, and, and we know, you know, that, that a lot of that inflation is really impacting food prices. And so with the universal food meal program, are we finding that it's fully funded? Are we finding that it's, that it's not? And then if not, what is that percentage that's coming out of our general fund?
So in our child nutrition services, we are able to, while, while the price of food has gone up significantly, we are able to have actually not only a balanced budget, but she's, she has excess, which we're putting into reserve for equipment and other things that are needed for our nutrition services program. You know, as you know, we're, or you may have heard, we're moving to fresh prepared. And, and that has costs associated to it with kitchens and refrigeration and so on. So Zeta can talk about that. We were monitoring the budget closely at the beginning of the year. We thought that we would have to have a general fund contribution to it, but it turns out that we actually are doing quite well.
Yeah, that's, that's wonderful news, I really appreciate that. Prop 28, do we know when that is supposed to go into effect? Is that for the 20, what, 23, 24 school year?
Yes.
Or, okay, yes.
And, and, oh, can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt. And, and the funds that we received for 23, 24 have to be expended within three years. So we have this kind of rolling fund, so we'll get funds 23, 24, have to be expended by 26, we'll get additional funding in 24, 25, that go out to 27. So we're actually, Christine and Evan and I, and HR, we're all planning to sit down and like, figure out what's, what's going to look like for the first year, and then how can we scale it?
Yeah, and, and my understanding in the fine print was that it is site-specific, not district-specific, is that correct?
Right now, that's the way it is, yes.
And do you know, or maybe this is for the future presentation, so maybe just put it on the list for that, is, I know there are supplanting rules, but does money that's not coming through our revenue stream but is coming through parent donations, does that count in the supplanting equation?
So.
Do you not know yet?
We don't know yet.
Okay.
Yes.
Because it kind of seems like that's an important answer to maybe change some things that our affiliates do before it counts?
Yes, well, we're hearing, we have, we are hearing different things, so we're trying to sort that out, and we've been asking for that information.
Great.
I don't think they know yet.
Because, you know, I, I think, right, there's a, because we usually ask our affiliates, right, to make some commitments, I think, early next year, and so it would be nice to help them if we get some information.
Yeah, we already asked them to, to begin thinking about their commitments, they'll be due in February, and we expect to have something by the end of January.
Well, and it kind of defeats the whole purpose of advocating for new revenue if it never allows the other side to have relief from.
Exactly.
From that kind of supplanting, I guess.
And we also have, you know, the HR matters of the employment of staff with, you know, this donations, right? Generally, there's rules around that, so that's why we have the commitments made so early, so that we can make sure that people are offered employment.
Laura, did you have any other questions? Jessie or Suzanne?
Good.
Okay, I just had little tiny ones that Stella answered for me today, so I don't think we need to take up time here for those. All right, so are you looking for a motion to adopt the first interim?
So the, let me read it back to you again.
Acceptance of the.
Yes, accept and certify the positive certification for the first interim report.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make, make a motion to accept and certify the budget, the interim report.
I'll second. The motion was made by Board Member Van Zee and seconded by Board Member Brat. Roll call vote, Student Board Member Ayapan.
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
Okay, Stella, I think you're on this one, too. Public disclosure of major provisions of the.
Right. So in, this is a standard practice, protocol for school districts when you negotiate a settlement agreement with your associations, that you submit to the county, it was called the AB 1200 Disclosure Report, that basically attests that you're able to afford what you have negotiated, and they certify that and send the letter back to school districts. So it's just a disclosure, you don't take action on this, you take action on the agreement.
Okay, this does not say I have to open and close a public hearing.
Oh, you do need a public hearing, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Stella did her disclosure, we just did it out of order. If you don't have any cards, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, and now we go to Keith to cover the tentative agreement.
Thank you, thank you, President Hurd. So the district and SEIU met at the bargaining table for annual reopen or negotiations for the current school year on Wednesday, November 30. The parties reached tentative agreement in an impressively brief two-hour session. The agreement includes the same 8.5% ongoing salary increase with the same effective date, and a 1% one-time off-schedule payment, as has been negotiated with our other bargaining units this year. It also includes new, a new additional longevity increment for employees who've completed 35 consecutive years of employment with the district, as we bargained with our other classified bargaining units earlier this year. It includes a commitment to maintain fully paid health and welfare benefits for full-time employees who elect the Kaiser Health Plan during the 2023 plan year. And it also includes an agreement that the parties meet later this year to discuss and work through issues pertaining to working outdoors in conditions of extreme heat, looking at triple-digit heat. That's very common, a very common concern and a very common environment in this area in which SEIU employees need to work in the spring, summer, and fall season. The tentative agreement was approved last Wednesday, pardon me, December 9, with 100% of the SEIU voting membership casting yes on the tentative agreement. So with that, given that the AB 1200 and AB 2756 disclosures have just been presented by Ms. Kemp, we ask that the board this evening take action to vote to ratify the tentative agreement between the district and SEIU local 1021.
Any comments or questions?
I'd like to move to motion.
Okay.
I'll second. The motion was made by Board Member Ordway and seconded by Board Member Brat. Roll call vote, Student Board Member Ayapan.
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
And thank you to the negotiating team on both sides for that quick process.
Absolutely, and President Hurd, if I could, so Carrie Lucchini called me about an hour or so before closed session this afternoon to let me know that she was not going to be able to be present tonight, but she wanted me to make sure that I mentioned that SEIU appreciated the manner in which this year's negotiations were conducted. And we, as a district, it's become pretty common for us to give a shout-out to the members of both the union's bargaining team and the district's bargaining teams for collaboratively and promptly negotiating a settlement in this year's negotiations. So for SEIU, the SEIU team members included President Carrie Lucchini, Vice President Jeremy Herringer, Secretary Teresa Woodruff, Bargaining Team Member Ron Saxer, and SEIU Field Representative Angela Thomas. And on the district side, we had Maintenance Director Abdul Mixin, Custodial Services Director Ismail Baz, Transportation Jason Flores, Director of Classified Human Resources, Latonya Williams, and Lead Negotiator this year with SEIU was Melanie Jones. So thank you to all of those individuals as well, thank you.
Thank you for adding that. Okay, now we're on 11.4, which Christine Warhol is going to lead us on, first reading of the new board policy and administrative regulation 5148.3 on preschool and early childhood education.
Thank you, Trustee Hurd. Tonight, we bring forward a new board policy and AR regarding our early childhood program that we contract with our California Department of Education on. We are excited that we offer our state preschool programs, and so we're bringing forward a new board policy tonight that reflects the latest CSVA updates to the new state regulations. We're also bringing forward an AR for consideration that reflects the major requirements of the California State Preschool Program and the latest CSVA updates to clarify that families need to meet at least one of the two specified criteria to be eligible for subsidized services. We know you have the opportunity to review this board policy, and we have our Executive Director of Elementary, Nadine Rosenzweig, here to answer any questions as she oversees our fantastic program.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm delighted to be here, and I didn't know if you had a chance to look at it, but for six years, we've had the state preschool, one class at Live Oak, and the other is at Walt Disney. When the program opened, I was principal at Live Oak, so really saw it from the ground running. And not only Executive Director, I am the Program Director for the preschool, so I have all the certifications that's required for this. So I didn't, do you want me to give you an overview, or do you have questions?
If you've prepared an overview, I would like to hear it.
Okay, it's like counting sheep, and, so I'm, we're very proud of the two classes because the reason for opening them were to give just equal opportunity to our youngest learners that could not afford preschool. So the state, every year in July, the state adjusts the mean, the state median income, so it is income-based that families are eligible for the program, and they do come in, fill out some confidential paperwork, and meet with us to see if they meet that criteria. So just to give you an example, a family of four this year could max out at, the income level would be $112,105, so they can't go over that, and they look at different formulas and bring in different paperwork for us. And we really try every opportunity to get the students in, because it's a wonderful program. We can take up to 24 students, we must maintain an eight-to-one ratio. The T, as well as the two parent educators in the class, have to have the early childhood units, and they have a permit under early childhood education. So our teachers in our district are not only credentialed with multiple subjects, they have the additional early childhood units that is needed by the state. And so at this time, both classes have about 15 to 16 children in them, and it's been a little transitional this year with illness and some students moving. But other than that, we did present to you in August, in the AR and BP, it shares that every year we do present to our Board of Education our preschool handbook that has all the requirements and stipulations, and you did approve that earlier this year. Now we're bringing forward this new BP AR for, we've never had one, so we do feel we're in our sixth year of the program, it's time to get it officially on board here for our district.
Okay. Does anyone have any feedback, because it's a first reading, we share if we think anything needs to be clearer or something missing?
I have a question about the program, but I don't know if it's appropriate to ask.
Yeah, sure.
I'm, I'm just curious of the, what percentage of students that qualify for the program actually get a spot in the program in our, in our district? Do you know?
Um, I, I want to say most of them. We do have to talk to families that they are not eligible, because some of our families are self-employed, so some of the documentation that they present is not eligible. We do everything possible to make sure, but I know we did turn away about five or six families this year that didn't meet the requirements.
Yeah, no, not, not, but in terms of space, like, do, are, do we ensure that everyone that qualifies has a spot, or are we limited in the amount of space that we?
Yes, and so this year Walt Disney is capped at 16 students, not the 24, because we only have a teacher and a parent educator, so we do have had that position posted, so we do need another parent educator, and then we can onboard the rest of the children to go for 24. And Live Oak, we have space at Live Oak right now.
And I'm usually the one with lots of board pickings, I didn't see anything, I thought it was wonderful.
Well, with curriculum, now that I'm thinking, we do follow the preschool learning foundations, and I know this board is very keen on assessment. We do use the DRDP, it's a developmental assessment that we do twice a year, and so the teachers are trained on that, they do do that. We do have parent conferences, they present the DRDP results to the family, and with family engagement, which is part of our strategic directions, they sit in conferences and come up with goals for the children to meet the needs that, that we set for them, and then we'll meet again in the spring. We are getting ready to do some parent education, starting in the new year, and our families do like that. We do, we bring it virtual, so that they don't have to leave home, and we send home packets and different things that way.
With the changes in transitional kindergarten, once that's fully implemented, will the preschool then only be one year, or will it actually begin for younger kids?
So our preschool does take three and four-year-olds. If a child is four and they're eligible for TK, they could go to TK, and also if they're qualified, attend preschool, where an after-day program.
Okay, so they could have a full-day program with the two halves.
They could have a full day doing that. We have to look at it, because their homeschool could be different than the Live Oak, where the preschool programs are, but we can look at that. Preschool is three hours a day, every day, there's no minimum day for them, they come to school every day, they're only closed when it's a school holiday.
Okay, so we need a motion to, oh, no, not.
This is just a first read, I believe.
The first reading, so it's just under public hearing, not under action, so, okay?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're at 11.5, where we're going to look at a whole bunch of different board I would like to propose that we take any comments or discussion one at a time so that we stay on the same bylaw and not jump around. Let's start with the first one. Wait, Dr. Malloy or Cindy, did you have anything you wanted to open with? I'm sorry, didn't mean to skip you. Go ahead.
I'm going to take Dr. Malloy's place to save his voice. The five board bylaws are being brought back to you for approval this evening. You saw them at your October 14 workshop, and based on input, that input has been incorporated. And so we are looking for approval tonight and/or any changes that you'd like to make.
Okay. So, does anyone have any feedback related to 9321, which is, if I can scroll through my PDF here.
Closed session.
Closed session. Okay, I had just something that I thought would make it clearer because it kind of relates to the discussion we had before we started closed session tonight. I think in that, I think it's like the second paragraph where it's talking about the timing. I think if we reworded paragraph three, that red one, to say, "Prior to beginning a closed session, the board shall convene in open session and disclose the items," and then the rest would be the same. It's on page 187. Okay, I'll say that part, I didn't mark that as clearly. And then, related, it's a little further down, I'll have to find where, "After the closed session, the board shall reconvene in open," is the same, is what's there. Then I don't think we need the words "before adjourning the meeting" and just jump right into "and, when applicable, publicly disclose." Just think it's tighter. Okay. Anything else on that one? Okay, so then, the next one is 9012, 912, and that one's topic is, sorry, we're scrolling.
Board Member Electronic Communications.
Does anybody have anything on that one?
Which page is this?
Starts on 195 of the packet.
90, I wrote down 9152, is that part of this, or is that?
No.
No, that's just.
Oh, wait.
Because it's not listed on here. It's the student board member?
Yeah, and I had notes on 9152, but it's not, also, 9150 also, we pulled that one.
Oh, we pulled that, so I should move my notes to another.
All right. So 912 is the next one. It starts on page 195, and it addresses Board Member Electronic Communication. Nothing? I don't have anything either. Okay, so let's go on. The next one listed here is 9100, and that one is on organization. And as you guys are looking, I'll just jump in because I have mine. As written, I'm not really sure the way it talks about conducting the election reflects what we do, so I was wondering if maybe we could replace it with, "The board shall each year elect one of its members to be president, usually the current vice president, and another to be vice president, usually the current clerk, and then, and another to be the clerk." Just to kind of reflect that rotating thing, but it also leaves it open to that, you know, could have something different, but that's sort of the expectation. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. Cindy, I can copy these for you, so it's easier. And then, moving on to 9320.
I have a question on that. It's a simple one. So, under regular meetings, it stays six o'clock, we start at seven, I don't know. I know we've had this conversation back and forth about shifting it, but I think we landed on staying at seven, is that correct?
You did. We'll make that change.
Okay. That one was meetings and notices. Anyone else have anything on that one?
And regarding that time, you'll have to discuss that at your next board workshop, which is at own governance. So if you choose to make a change, you can change it at that time, and we can make the update.
Okay, thanks. And then, the next one is 93, so you pulled 9322 also?
It's here, 9322 is here.
Okay, 93, I don't see it on our agenda, though.
Page 26.
Yeah, it's in the packet, but it's not on.
I'm sorry, that one was pulled. My apologies.
That one was pulled, okay. And then, so let's jump ahead to 9323, meeting conduct.
So I have a note on that as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, under the quorum and abstentions, and I'm saying that word wrong, because in the third paragraph down, the last paragraph in that section, it refers to seven board members.
Yeah, I thought of that, too.
Yes, and we'll change that to five.
And can we just remove that whole sentence, and then you don't even have to talk about? Because it defines that a quorum is the majority of the board, which would be three. I do think it might make sense to actually state a quorum is three, so that it's obvious. Because if you're looking for something like that, it's nice to see it spelled out and not do the math.
Well, and then identify five, because it could, you know, because it's a majority of three out of five type of thing, instead of just stating three, putting context around it.
Sure. We can make that change, too.
And I wanted to add on the public participation paragraph. I really like how you reflected that. Thought that was just nice. In fact, when Jesse and I were doing some onboarding, he was asking me questions, and I was like, "Wait, it's actually right in there." So I think you really captured nicely.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was like just more of a side comment or first discussion, is that in section five here, where it talks about how we're going to honor the community to be able to speak and be able to do that, and really the intention of the board is, the ethos of the board is to be to hear everything as much as we can, and make sure that there's a diversity of viewpoints that are presented, so I really like that as well, too.
Okay, so can we have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Vanzee. Roll call vote, student Board Member Ayipen.
Aye.
Board Member Vanzee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, next, we have the item that we moved to 11.6, which was from the consent ratification purchase orders. Jesse, do you want to bring up your?
Yeah, so, and this was a question that, as this is my first, you know, packet to approve, and we're looking at ratification of purchase orders under $50,000. And I was looking at what was included with the packet, and I had a conversation with Stella versus, over email, and just asked, there's a bunch of line items here where I can see the vendor, and I can see the date and PO number and things like that, but there's no description. So I don't know, you know, on a certain date, amazon.com, what this is in relation to. And I'm just thinking from an oversight perspective, it might be beneficial to see some sort of category or description for these, not because I have any sort of, you know, inkling in my head that there's anything wrong with the process of how it is, but if I'm being asked for some oversight, it could provide me some additional clarity on some descriptions. But Stella asked that I would bring this up so that we could give direction to her team as a unified board versus it just being one person asking for a change.
And I'd be curious to know what's possible to easily pull in a report, because I don't think any of us wants your team to have to go through and look up every PO and do that. But if there's something that can be extracted from the system to add that column?
I believe we might be able to get the account line. I'm not sure that we are, I have to investigate this. If we can get the account code, so, you know, for example, if it's 5210, that's consultant. We might be able to say, you know, this particular, you know, Kettler International, Inc., for $1,600 was a consultant, but it's very general. It's materials, consultant, maybe field trip, travel, you know, they're very generalized account codes.
A lot of the vendors, you can kind of guess, you know, if it's Amazon, can patch you that it, but if it's Amazon, who knows what it is.
Exactly, and you know, we have number processes in place. For example, when somebody submits a purchase requisition, if it's being paid, depending on what budget it's being paid from, it could go through the supervisor to review it. I don't know if the ED Service Supervisor sees those, but for title monies, we always had, you know, Title I was reviewed to make sure that it was in compliance with the spending requirements for that particular grant. If it's site discretionary funds, we have our purchasing department make sure that it falls within the purchasing guidelines. So there's a review process, and then, and then for the, you know, these large things like field trips, you know, we have field trip requests that go in, so we know that it's a field trip. But, you know, granted, I understand, you know, I was mentioning to Trustee Vanzee that in a previous district, you know, we had this come up, and we just listed by vendor, you know, what the vendors provide, and we just sort of kept a book of that, which I don't know that we have, we'd have to construct that here. But for the most part, you know, the items like amazon.com, we could find out, like, what are those things generally that are we're ordering from Amazon, and, you know, what's the approval process? But I can understand that the public may want to know, like, why did we spend $100,000 at Amazon in the last month, right?
Especially because you'd also have to go through and add them all up, because they're all over the place.
Well, we can sort that through a spreadsheet.
It's a tough thing when you're in a seat where you're supposed to be oversight, but it's kind of an odd place for the oversight when you have the oversight down below.
So I was just, in light of Stella's response, might we take the question back, figure out what is doable, and bring that back next month with rationale regarding kind of what we would propose based upon your question? So what I'm hearing is, having greater clarity without having staff go through each PO, is there something that we could do that kind of answers the question to time-consuming? And why don't we bring back a suggestion at the next meeting when we bring this very regular report? How does that sound? Sorry.
That sounds great.
That works great.
Okay, we'll start working on that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Sure. And I think if things get in the way and it takes till the February meeting, that's okay, too. It's, it's just something that I hope you can appreciate, sitting in our seats, it's like, what's our value add, right? And so.
Absolutely. I mean, I think I would want to know, I want to know myself, like, there's a lot of Amazon here. Yeah, I mean, I, every, so I'm with you, I was curious about this as well, so.
I'm wondering if, you know, yeah, depending on what you, you know, you investigate and what you can do, right? At least maybe the process of like, you know, like, how many, are there just one person or two people looking at, you know, the receipts or whatever, maybe just an overview of the process?
Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Yeah, and putting it into context, so this is, I guess I'm just repeating what Susanna said, so.
Okay, that takes us through the action and public disclosure items. 12.0 has been deferred to next month? Oh, thank you for adding that. Okay, so, we need to approve the ratification of, or we need to ratify the purchase orders greater than 50, or less than 50,000. Motion, please?
I'll make a motion to ratify.
Second. The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call vote, Board Member, Student Board Member Ayipen.
Aye.
Board Member Vanzee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, 12.0 is going to be deferred to January. We're done with consent, now we're on administrative matters and board member reports. Anya, would you like to add anything in addition to your earlier report?
I think I covered everything.
Okay, thank you. Jesse, do you have anything?
Well, and I know I'm new, I just want to thank everybody on this team and in the community, thank you so much for trusting me with this spot. I will take that with sincerity and the gravity that it deserves, and serve this entire community, hear everybody out, and I'm just very honored to be here. I'd also like to acknowledge the other fellow candidates that ran for the same seat, Michelle Peterson and Jerome Pandell. They did everything that they could, they ran really good races, and they did it because they care about this community, and I'd like to acknowledge them as well, too. So, thank you so much, I'm proud to be here, and I'm excited to serve this community. And then, I guess the one thing that I was able to do was join the Sierra Mountain Valley High School Football Team for their send-off meeting, which was really fun. I dragged four of my kids there, and we were able to watch them all march out of the gym, get on their bus, have the police escort out of town. There's a lot of energy and excitement and pride, and I'm happy to call this my hometown.
Well, welcome, Jesse, to the board. No, we, yeah, look forward to your contributions. Okay, just a couple of things, starting with this morning, I was able to finally attend one of the assemblies, the Street Smart assemblies, it was really, really fun, at Hidden Hills Elementary. And it was, I'm so glad, because I think our kids know certain safety rules already, because I think it was like a TK, K, and first graders, just sitting all on the ground. And then when the video come up with, you know, someone who wasn't going to put on their helmet before they get on the bike, everybody went, "Oh, oh." So I'm like, "Good, they know the rules." Or, or safety, right, to be safe. Anyway, and I am looking forward to actually Thursday when I attend, because I understand that the assemblies are very different from, for middle school, so I'll be attending the Gill Ranch one on Thursday. We attended the, as I said before, the School Board, California School Board Association Conference, very, very, yeah, good sessions, I learned a lot. Attended one of the AI, yeah, sessions, and it's both about how AI is, can be a help, and maybe a little bit of, you know, hindrance to education, and it's, yeah, it was, it was very, very interesting. I brought that up only because Dr. Malloy was talking about, and in my practice, we've been hearing a lot about how AI is writing essays, and because they take the, as you said, they take the persons, right, writings and texts and voice and stuff, it's actually considered original. So, some of the schools, the UC, actually, I don't know if a lot of people know this, the UC actually uses, runs through their plagiarism, plagiarism software, through their personal insight question writing and stuff, but, maybe I shouldn't say this, but because, because it is considered, the essay written by AI is considered original, it actually does not, that plagiarism software doesn't catch that, so it's a little bit scary. Anyway, back to, back to my report, so, very interesting, learn a lot about, you know, finances and, and, and education. Also, really enjoyed the, thank you to the Education Foundation on their holiday party where we came together and just kind of celebrate supporters and endowment committee, as well as the staff of the Education Foundation and of course their board. So thank you for that event. Yeah, I'm just looking forward actually to a couple of the different things with students, like the iQuest mock interviews coming up with Cal-Hi and things like that. But, just want to say happy holidays to everyone.
So I want to take a second to welcome Trustee Vanzee. I'm really excited that you're here, and I think that the fact that this could possibly be...
the shortest board meeting that I've been in, but maybe, maybe you're a little good luck charm. I don't know. But I appreciate your dedication to the students and to the educational community. It's heartfelt for, I think, for everyone, so thank you.
Thank you.
I and Susanna, we attended the San Ramon City Liaison Meeting. And then we had a traffic's board meeting. And they are starting the RFP process to conduct a new traffic congestion and school site circulation audit. I think it's the first time in ten, ten years. Am I, am I over-exaggerating that?
That sounds like a little bit.
More, maybe five years. It's been a while. It's been a while. So, so, but it has been since the Dory Valley has really been built up. So it'll be interesting to see where the patterns are now and how to use those funds and the best way for our district and for our community in terms of traffic. I had my first El Cap meeting in several years and I'm really grateful to be back on the committee with Anya. And my daughter's on it too, and Shelley. And, and I want, I know Anya had mentioned that bringing in more students. And I also want to mention to parents, I was on the El Cap Committee when I was a parent prior to being a board trustee. And I found it from a parent perspective to be really informative and an opportunity for me as a parent to be able to not only just learn, but also provide a little bit of direction to kind of get, have my voice be heard in that space on a district level. So, and there weren't very many parents. And I just would welcome and would appreciate if anyone that's interested in that and has the time and the energy to be able to join us. I believe it's four meetings a year. They're in the evening. And, and if you're interested, you feel free to just email me, elbrat@srvusd.net, easy, and I will point you in the right direction. And then we have the CSBA conference. And, and again, I found that also to be very valuable. And it really, for one of the big takeaways, general takeaways for me was just kind of the reminder of really ensuring that in all conversations we center the student and that, that it's, that that's why we're here is for each and every student and to really make sure that as we're having our conversation, for me personally, to make sure that I'm, I'm centering a student in the thought processes that I have. And then I think Rachel and I were at the Danville State Church of Latter Day Saints Christmas Celebration. All four comprehensive high school choir or chamber choruses performed. And I brought my in-laws. Man, it was, it was just such a wonderful way. I celebrate Christmas and it was such a wonderful way for us to bring in the holiday season. So for those of us that do celebrate Christmas, it was a beautiful opportunity. And then San Ramon Valley High School, just a last shout out. I was able to listen to the game and, you know, it was, it was great all the way to the end, man. All the way to, to that overtime. And, and I just, I love seeing our students excel and to, to go all the way to state. It's just an amazing accomplishment. And, and every, every person that was a part of that team, whether a student, a family member, a supporter, coaches, the school itself, the, the community, it was just a great accomplishment. So I'm really, really excited for them. So that's my report.
Thank you. I also went to CSBA with the whole crew. And really, it, it's great to be part of that, you know, bigger setting. You know, we're, we're in our own districts all the time. But to be with other districts, it kind of, it's communal, but it also kind of gives you something to compare to. In the delegate assembly meetings that I went to down before the conference, one of the highlights is they've been really working hard at involving the delegates in conversations related to the policy platforms. And so they broke us into four groups by the four policy committees. One of them is strengthening local governance. A second one is securing fair and fair funding. Third one is improving the conditions of children. And the last one is ensuring achievement for all. So you can see there's a little bit of alignment with our strategic directions, right? I signed up to be a convener or co-conveener for the group that I chose, which was the ensure achievement and got picked to be a co-conveener, which was basically a note taker, which means I didn't get to participate very much. But I did walk around the room and listen to discussions. And it's amazing how even in something as simple as ensure, ensure achievement for all, there were board members just like us in the room going, well, what do we mean by achievement? And, you know, so a lot of the, start down at the basic conversations that we were having during COVID, as we worked on our strategic directions, some of them hadn't even, I guess, had in their districts. And so each of those four groups did brainstorming and prioritizing, and then more brainstorming and more prioritizing. And ended up with basically three asks of CSBA's legislative team. And so I was really excited to see, you know, what came out of my group, but then what came out of the other groups. And I just think it's, it's a good thing that they're asking the delegates what they think and not just advocating on what CSBA thinks. It's important. So that was enlightening. Got a lot out of the conference and will really add more than what you guys said. But it was just, you know, great experience and, and great workshops. In addition to that, last week, we had a grade reform committee that was all day, really needy, and thank you to Chris George for restructuring a thoughtful day. As we heard in the organizational meeting, I'll be replaced by Laura and Shelley, but that's fine. I think it's, it's great for you guys to get on the learning curve of really what they're doing. We've got some really wonderful teachers that are the early adopters. And they're also very, very conscious, I think, about how this spreads and how it spreads positively and how we educate the rest of the staff about what it is and what it isn't, as well as the community, what it is and what it isn't. And then, as you mentioned, students at the center. The, the point is to be getting towards that achievement for all. And it completely ties into the strategic directions. They're also with the deep learning and innovation meeting that Susanna and I were both at. Thank you to the Ed Foundation for their holiday party. It's always nice how they include all of us. Tomorrow is a brunch for the PTA, so lots of holiday celebrating. Just wanted to add on about the choral concert, I guess you'd call it, at the church next door. It's so amazing to watch the church choir and they have the little tiny kids. And then our four high schools who are also well-represented singing the most beautiful music. And, you know, the ones you know and you can sing along with, and then some really diverse and innovative pieces as well. And then they close it with everyone singing together. So all the high school performers are lined in and up the rows and, and it balances with the congregation all singing. And it's just beautiful, just the whole concept of a community coming together. So I totally did what you, all the feels you were feeling. We have a traffic's holiday party where we celebrate our drivers this week. I think several of us are going to the transitions graduation. And I'm so excited. I've set up school visits for next week finally. So I get to visit Baldwin, Iron Horse and Quail Run. And that's my report. I guess we don't have you on there because your report was earlier. I'm used to the old way where the superintendent closes. So with that, we can adjourn. Happy holidays to everyone and enjoy the break. And we'll be back, well, we'll be back at our workshop on Thursday. So, good night.